Andrew, can you come in for just a sec? Okay, so let's call the order, City Council meeting for November 11th, 2025. We'll start with the roll call, starting from Councilwoman Smeouin.
Jessica Smeouin, present.
Kelly Law, present.
Chrissy Hanneman, present.
Jason Thielen, present.
Brent Rummler, present.
We will follow with the prayer offered by Councilwoman Smeouin, and then we will have a pledge that is led by Councilman Thielen.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening to come together as a council and a community to focus on the items to improve our community. We're grateful for this beauty that surrounds us and for the safety and peace we enjoy. We ask for thy spirit to guide us, for us to be able to discern and make decisions that will continue to improve and strengthen the city of Alpine. And we're thankful, Father, for all those that serve to improve what we have and what we enjoy in the city of Alpine. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the items on the consent calendar. I believe Shane sent an email regarding the weather track system. That is a little bit different than the original. The cost came down by, what, $6,000? And then with the minutes, I know Chrissy entered some adjustments. Are both parties? You guys have that resolved, right?
Well, I think so.
Okay. Okay, with that, are there any questions on the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar with the edits made by Councilmember Hanneman. And were there any other edits to the minutes?
Jason.
And Councilmember Thielen. As everything else is written.
I don't think I submitted any this time.
Wait, did you have comments?
Oh, that was, sorry, for the public safety board. I apologize. I sent it to the wrong group.
Oh, no wonder I couldn't find where it belonged.
I was confused as well.
Okay, Dan figured it all out.
No, that's what I figured.
So it's just me?
Yeah, just Councilmember Hanneman.
Okay, I'll second then.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Smeouin, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman. Any further discussion? If not, let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Jessica Smeouin, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes.
Okay, consent calendar is approved. Let's move on to public comment. I've got a comment card for Andrew Young. If you can come up and state your name and your address. Will be followed by Mr. Steve Burrows.
Andrew Young, 1371 East 490 South. Thank you all. It's great to see you all. This, this, I apologize at the late notice of this, and this isn't to upset any plans, but it's a concerned citizen that will help give you some information in regards to the fire station plan coming up. I didn't know about this earlier, however, I would have brought it to your attention earlier. I don't think it's a goal to upset any of the plans, but to shorten it, what they've given me, this is from Karen McDaniel's, who is Karen Wooton. You might know the Wooton family that lives just off of High Bench, near Seenic. Longtime Alpine residents. Only reason I got my Eagle Scout was because of them. So anyways, in cleaning up the city after the election, this came up that they wanted to know what was going on, so that I let them know about the fire department, that this is coming up. Found out that Karen McDaniel's, Brother Wooton's wife, who lives there, is the granddaughter of, they couldn't be here for the Veterans Day. There's my son calling. Is the granddaughter of the Olson family, who owns the house on the corner for the fire department build. I think, having read through all this, that they'd just like to be involved a little bit. I don't think they will upset the plans, what you currently are doing on the parking lot, but if you could have some degree of reaching out to them, I don't see the fire chief, with some sort of respect of having them be at least able to weigh in on that corner house. They can give you the historical value of it. They can give you the history of it and any sort of benefit with what you do with the bricks or whatever you do with the memorial or why it's important. She's the last remaining descendant, from what I know, with exception of one cousin, and it comes from the Olson family. I didn't know she was three generations. Again, I do think they will be supportive and helpful in your plans, but that would be the person that would help. So they gave me a long text that, you know, they think it's a shame. They would love to be involved. They don't, they're concerned about it being tearing down. However, if you talk with them, I bet a single discussion would create some, you know, beneficial results on what you're doing. And they were just, they're just not, they just don't, they're not aware of it. So anyways, there are a lot, I mean, they went on a long time, but Karen McDaniel's, I don't know if you've written it down, Karen McDaniel's, Brother Lynn Wooton, just up near Seenic, they would be the family to talk with. And thank you so much for your time and also all the help with everything else and this opportunity to make a comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows, if you could come up, state your name and your address.
I'm Stephen Burrows. I live at 163 Middle Ark Drive in Alpine. First of all, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council members and the staff. As I've had questions the last three or four months and sought answers, you guys have made yourselves readily available, and I appreciate it. My comment is just thanks for the next step in our long-term water project with the East Canyon Crest Road construction. It's nice to, the traffic needs, we're all working on dealing with the traffic, but that's fine. That's a consequence of making an improvement. And I look forward to what's next on our water plan and it being financed so we can continue this process year after year after year to improve our pressure irrigation and culinary water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, which is reports and presentations. We will have to skip over item A. It's, are they, do you know, are they coming in January, Brent? Or, okay, they rescheduled to January, the people from the organization. So we will start with item B, which is the Highland Library Report. Do we have anyone from the Highland City Library?
I'm thinking they must forgot. They, I had confirmed it with them, and so I just skipped over.
Okay, so we'll move on to item C, the Alpine Days Report for 2025. You can say your name.
No, you're a staff. Oh, sorry.
I just print a few down, not that, just to remind you of the events. And just in case, we have some a few minutes, so that way you can have some of your names for the recording. Yes, Heidi Smith. All right. Thanks for having me. I guess that's just the event list.
jog your memory in case you did have something that you wanted to bring up and you just had forgotten about all the events. Anyway, overall, I think it was a success. Nobody got hurt. All the events went off. There were glitches along the way, but most of them were hidden behind the scenes. People didn't revise it, and everybody, I believe, had fun. I kind of think that there's something for everyone, whether it's Saturday is your thing, or if it's the little ones, you know, the little events along the week, everybody kind of has something for their level of fun. A lot of tired chair people, a lot of volunteers were exhausted at the end of the week, but like I said, nobody got hurt. Everybody re-upped, with the exception of Tommy, who does the Chalk the Walk, and she's moving. So she has already, yeah, their family is moving, and she's already found a replacement. So she shadowed her during the event, so that's the good news. I also had a great intern girl, Ryan, we call her, and she worked so hard all week, actually all summer. She, she helped with the poppies, she helped with trucks and tunes, and then she was there for all of Alpine Days. So the good thing we did this year, as opposed to last year, is that the intern was specifically in marketing. So her, she actually got credit at BYU for her internship and was able to do that. Is that the Highland Library behind me? Everybody looked up. Okay, things that went well. The best thing, I think, was the theme, because it was easy. It was the 175th anniversary. It kind of just fell in our laps. It made for a good mailer, which I do have a couple copies if you want to re-acquaint yourself. It also helped the T-shirt, the theme. The contest this year, I think, went really well. I think the design was excellent. We got really good feedback from it. Also, girl Ryan, our friend, gave us a tip of the fact that younger people like the Comfort Colors fabric. And so we went with that, and it was a really good choice. We got a lot of feedback about the quality of the shirts. Golf tournament was new this year. It actually was very well-attended. Got really good feedback from the public. Those that participated had a great time. There were a bunch of sponsors that came in, for whole sponsors, and it almost broke even. It was pretty much paid for itself. The health code tweaks from last year that we got suggestions for, we made some corrections this year, and I think that they went well. The, we added free water. That said, free water was hard, because I, we were refilling it quite a bit, so I'm going to have to tweak a little bit just how that works, because we were just refilling the coolers a lot. But people appreciated it. Plus, we added some lighting to a lot of the events in the dark, and that was also added for safety, plus it actually added a little bit of control for the teenagers, because it was, there were not as many dark areas. There was a new thing with Vega, which is actually a friend of the Butterfields. They had a new app, and we, they came in and presented, and we were giving them some, they worked with us and did some of our ticket sales. Took a lot of the cost of the invoicing down. For example, let's say, a $5 ticket used to cost, there was a minimum fee plus a percentage. And, and so the cost really added up. Vega worked with us and charged us a nominal fee per ticket, and so the cost to the city was a lot lower. So they're, we're working, we're helping them develop their app. They're an app that was usually used for schools. So they're very secure, because they, they deal with kids, but they're translating it. It's also nice, because a lot of the people that have teenagers already have the app, because their kids are using it at the high schools. So we're, we're helping them develop this side for the city, and it's a nice partnership. So it worked out. We only did it on the small events, but we can expand it as the app grows. So that was new this year. And then the website, we redid the website just because it needed to be more informative and more reactive, and so we brought it in-house, and it was easier to keep it accurate and controlled. So that's, that's the things that went well, that changed. Some of the things that maybe, we may not do Spike Ball again, because the turnout was very low. And I'm thinking, I'm not young enough to know for sure, but it's kind of, the fad is fading. So we're looking for kind of a replacement for that spot. I have some citizens that have come up with some ideas, some residents that want to substitute on that day. So we'll, we'll kind of play it by ear, but I'll let you know if, what we end up with. And then most, so now that was what was good. The bumps in the road, the learning curve that I had or that I need to work on for next year. One was movie night. We're going to have to work with it. We had a little bit of too much darkness in the back. The, the young people took advantage of the fact that they were, their families were in front and, and gathered in the back and were not quiet or behaving. So I'm going to add some lighting. Going to have the patrols a little closer, because they were great to come in at the end. Oh, everybody came. So we'll work on that. If, if that doesn't work and it becomes a mess, we'll have to reconsider the following year, because it's just, we just can't have teenagers getting in trouble in the back. So the rest of the problems were all on Saturday. I think it was mostly because I, there were just more people even this year than there were last year. So the food trucks, we're going to up the number of food trucks, because they just got really busy on Saturday night. The porta-potties, because the food trucks were busy, also got busy suddenly. And so I need to just have more added on Saturday and maybe some more locations for them, because the porta-potties were, there was a long line. There was no line all week long until 5:00 on Saturday, and then there was a long line. Parking in the handicap parking is actually quite a challenge, and so I'm going to be working quite a bit on trying to get signage or whatever. I had a lot of people parking there that shouldn't have during the day. So at night, when we needed the parking for the handicap, they were not available. So I'm working on trying to figure out some way of keeping that protected for only those that are actually with the placards. And then, like I mentioned, the water coolers were a great idea. They're just really hard on Saturday. And it got really crowded to get the golf cart around to refill those. And so all my little alleys that I was using on Friday closed down on Saturday and filled up with people, so we've got to figure out a better way on that. And then the music, we had some feedback on the music. I have a great volunteer that was scheduling it, and he was trying something new. He tried to have a little bit hipper stuff on Friday for the younger crowd, a little bit more traditional on a Saturday, and he got some feedback that perhaps it was just a little bit ambitious on Friday. So we're just going to keep it mainstream this next year. Finances, it's in the packets up there. Basically, the numbers speak for themselves. Honestly, I don't know what's going to happen until I pull the trigger at the end of the spreadsheet and hope it works out. So it did come out. We came out ahead this year. We came out ahead last year. So I guess that's the right trend. As usual, the carnival and the boutiques pay for much of the activities. The ones that have small tickets, it's just basically to commit people and you get numbers. For example, like Chalk the Walk, she just needs to know how to plan ahead for how many it is. So she just charges a very nominal fee, just so she can control and plan and get registrations and things. Same with all those things. Most of them are pretty close. Like I said, most of the events are just gifts to the city. And so as such, they need to be financed by other things, and that's where the revenue comes in. As for donations, just so you know, there are donations that are in-kind or also buried. For example, Pet, the Pet Show, there's a $500 donation that's specifically for the Pet Show. So it's not in the donations. The one donation line is just your completely unencumbered donation, so not earmarked for any specific event. The golf, golf tournament has quite a bit of revenue from that. We have some, and then there's some in-kind. For example, the Tots in the Park is completely financed by the chiropractors for kids, but there's no accounting for that donation. They just, they give to the city. So there's a number of those as well that just donate. Any questions on Alpine Days or the finances?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, do we have a line item in our budget for Alpine Days? And how does that play a part into this, financials?
Yeah, we do. If you look in the financial report on page four, the revenue, Alpine Days and rodeo are listed separately. And then on the expense side, if you go to page...
Yeah, I don't have pages.
You're like, it's on there.
It's the full financial report that's in your packet.
In our online packet, yeah.
Yeah.
It's slightly difficult to read, though, and translate, and we talked about this. Part of the reason is because Dave has done a great job of doing prepaid expenses. So anything that was paid in 2024 fiscal year is applied forward, but he does not do the same for the revenue. So I actually have a breakdown, and I can give it to you. There were $33,000 of revenue collected in fiscal year 2024 that's applied in that year and didn't get forwarded on to the financials of this year. So it's a little bit confusing to do in apples to apples, because...
How do we, don't we have a line item that we say we're going to spend $80,000, or whatever the amount is on it?
Yep, that's on page eight.
But how does that play into this number here? Because this shows expenses, not counting those expenses or that. And this shows income-revenue, so there's a positive gain on it, not counting the expense that we've attached to the budget? I'm trying to understand.
Well, the money's budgeted. If it doesn't get spent, it doesn't get spent. So we budget for kind of a...
And then, so there's a revenue in, in the budget as well for it? And what is the revenue at, again?
The revenue for Alpine Days is listed at $85,000 for the budget, and we're just under $72,000 actual at this point.
The revenue shows in here 102. That's because it's going to come next.
That's because of the fiscal year 2024 issue. So it was applied in the numbers from 2024, and then the stuff. Anyway, we're going to try and correct it so that it lands correctly, but...
Our fiscal year really...
Hits right in the middle of all of it, yeah. So all the boutiques, all of that revenue, all comes in the fiscal year 2024. So it was not applied forward, and so...
I just have one other curious question. Do we accrue any costs for police and fire?
We do not. And I also, last year, and I didn't do it this year, looked into staff costs that were added. And I did that last year, and I forgot this year, so I can get those numbers for you.
That's for staff, like you and the other members of Alpine City's staff?
For the, yeah, for the, like Troy.
For police, there, and fire, for example, up at rodeo. We don't pay, Alpine City doesn't pay extra for that?
I don't see it in my invoices, but I don't know. Do you guys know?
We don't bill you, we don't pay extra.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have a...
Since both cities have a holiday, you just kind of just do it without billing the cities?
It's billed into the budget.
Good time.
It's billed into our budget, so I mean, at the end of the day, yes, we do pay for it. But it's, we're not billing it separately.
I'm curious, how much is, you know, obviously, that counts into this, to your point, but I'm curious what expense that is for Alpine City for police and fire for Alpine Days?
On fire, it's all manpower. So I mean, just, you know, to have an ambulance and then manpower to staff three nights at the rodeo and extra manpower that comes in for fireworks and for Saturday.
Does he need to be at the micro, microphone? That will, none of that will be caught. Thank you.
I don't have an exact number, but it's all manpower-related. As far as extra ambulance coverage, because we'll put a, we have an ambulance in the park for all day this year, Friday, all day Saturday. We have an ambulance at the rodeo. Every night, the rodeo's got to have a dedicated ambulance that stays at the rodeo the entire time, and then we bring in extra, extra help for the fireworks.
It would be interesting, our budget here, especially, you know, revenue expense, just to see that number. You're right, it's already in our budget, but we're paying for it, and it's attached to Alpine Days. It would just be interesting to see that.
To find out. And they do staff the Friday and Saturday. They have to be on-site for the mass gathering permit.
I can absolutely get you a number. It needs to go up, and I need to have a conversation, because we weren't prepared for the extra rodeo day and the extra park day this year. So when things are going to be added, if we're going to add a fourth day to the rodeo and three days in the park, or four days of fireworks, or whatever y'all are going to do extravaganza-wise, we just need to know.
Yeah, for the record, it's two days in the park and one fireworks show. Instead of exaggerating over that, no, that's great. And then police, also, I work with Sergeant Wagstaff quite a bit, and he makes sure of those. So there is a cost there, too, I'm sure.
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, and then I'll do rodeo.
Heidi, thanks so much for putting on another outstanding Alpine Days.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have a question. The biggest expense is music in the park.
Yes.
You mentioned Friday and Saturday. I see on here, it's only Saturday on your schedule, but, so that's the band?
It is actually both days. It starts at 4:00. Sorry, I can...
That's all right. That's fine. You don't, that's fine. So we're, we're paying bands to come? Is that why?
Well, that's the thing. We pay three bands. So the headliners both nights and one night, one extra. The rest of them are free. So you kind of get what you pay for. We do, you know, so it's a decision whether we can find bands that are good, that are free. If we can't, then we do pay. And the headliners both nights were paid, plus the pre-headliner, if that makes sense. I'll just do one more. We had the girl that was from American Idol. She was a, anyway, she, she also was paid, so...
So I, I've only paid for one concert, and that was Oingo Buingo when I was a BYU student, like 50 years ago.
Well, per person, it's a lot less.
Is this popular? Do the people like live bands? Or would a DJ be less expensive and be just as fun?
You know, I have a lot of feedback, and I can't speak for everyone, obviously, that it's a, they come and they set up their tents and they listen to the music. I think the one thing that I get the most comments on, good and bad, are whether they like the band. They either loved them or hated them or whatever, and I get calls, I get emails. People are very engaged.
So this is a staple we're going to...
I want to say yes, unless I get a lot of feedback that that is not the way.
It's a staple, all right.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I do know that people have set up tents since the beginning, and they're, they're all day long, so...
Yeah, I think if we weren't breaking even or making a profit, I might think a little bit harder about that, but since we're making a profit, if people like it, that's great.
I, I would agree with that. There's a couple areas, the auto show, I think I need to figure out that the cost on that one is their free T-shirts, and so I have to decide what... That's something I kind of inherited and continued, but I feel like it's a really big cost for a free T-shirt for people, you know, so that's just me. There's, so there's a couple things that I, I look on here and I say, mm. Now, I think I also included in the packet a breakdown, the, the general expenses, because it's a huge bucket and it just doesn't say anything. I did, I think, include that, didn't I, in the packet? So just so you know what the expenses are, obviously, I mean, it's the porta-potties, it's, you know, that kind of thing, but it doesn't, it's just a bucket of, of general, just making it happen. All right, any other questions? I can move on to, really quickly, to the rodeo, what I do know. So the rodeo finances, basically, oh, I forgot to say, next year's dates. August 8th are the, is the Saturday. The mountain bike and the golf tournament goes to the 15th. The rodeo will be the 13th, 14th, and 15th. School actually starts the following week, which is why it is that week, because it coincides with kind of the traditional, what we've been doing. And then school will start backing up and matching again, so it, that's... I did talk to all of the different events, and they're all available. Last one I heard from was the rodeo, and they can do that weekend, so that's what we're going to do. Rodeo, the New Bleachers, big thumbs up from everyone, so nice job on that. The, the staff loves it, the fans loved it. I got calls on it. It was, it was great. Well done. Rodeo tickets for residents, also still a big hit. It seemed to be well-received. People took advantage of it so that residents can get tickets, because I guess that was a big complaint that you couldn't. They sold out so quickly that people that lived here couldn't get them. So that is part of it. And then last on my, before I look at the finances, thank you to Kelly, who has done an outstanding job at the parking, because that was a hole that was left. If you went up there, they were all having so much fun. Kelly did a great job. He got a great people, group of people.
I think he's committed to do it the next 10 years.
And I was going to say, he is invited to continue, even though you don't sit there.
Heidi, you did an amazing job. Thank you.
No more, no moss, no moss. So anyway, no, you had a great group.
It's unanimous.
There you go. And then just quickly, the finances, I, I just threw together everything that came through the books. I did throw it out to Cody and Shelley. They did give a thumbs up to this. So basically, it made in the end $10,000, which, they did up this year the prizes to entice better cowboys, because they were getting feedback that some of the good cowboys didn't want to come, because there was no day prizes. There was a day something.
Slack.
Yeah, I, there's verbiage that the cowboys all know, but yeah, it was a, basically, per day, they give prizes for certain things. So they increased that, and it did make a difference. I can't answer a lot of feedback on the rodeo. I have yet to be able to get up there, but I could, you know, if you had any questions on the finances or something, I can, I can answer those. Anything?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Heidi.
Oh, I did have one.
Yeah.
I was waiting. Um, you had mentioned about getting the revenues all aligned in the same period. So can we just like run that by with Dave? And like, I'd love to have a three-way conversation.
Yeah, in fact, if you wanna be involved, yeah.
How to align that, because I think it would be very um simple and hopefully beneficial, so.
And especially because we already have a GL for it. We have a prepaid bucket for it. We just have to have him understand where those revenues are coming from.
Yeah, you just need to put the revenues in a different year and then all your expenses, yeah, we'll figure it out. But anyways, just, if you'll just loop me in a little, you know, on that solution, and then we'll, good.
No problem. Anything else?
Thank you, Heidi.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to item D, financial report.
So it's only been two weeks since our last financial report because of um the way it all worked out. But um we do have the latest financial report in uh your packet through the end of October. Uh, just a couple things to point out. The, on the revenue side, obviously, we won't be hitting our property tax revenue here for a couple months or so. Um, so that's showing low right now. Um, another one on page seven under streets, um capital outlay other than building, that's ten sixty seventy three. It shows that it's in the hole about five hundred and seventy thousand. The reason for that is the grant that we'll be receiving from Utah County. Um, we've submitted that invoice to them and uh they said it would probably take a couple of weeks to get that reimbursement. So, and then when we do our mid-year budget adjustment in January, we'll adjust things to reflect that. That's, that's part of, there's other, like, the way we paid our street projects that came out of other funds as well, like Class C and and that, so. Um, so everything else, I mean, again, projects are, have been hitting the last couple months, and we'll have some big payments to make on our Canyon Crest PI project coming up. Um, but things are, things look good, and everything looks like where it should be.
Does anybody have questions for Shane regarding our um financial report? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to our PI usage report then.
Okay, just the way the meeting is aligned, I've already given this to the irrigation company, like I do every year at their annual board meeting. Um, but uh for this year, we ended up uh using fifty two hundred and thirty eight acre feet of water. So that's up by one point eight five percent over last year. Considering how hot it was and everything, I think that's not too bad, really. Um, so you can kinda see, we're training up just a little bit, but it seems to, if you look at the last five years, it's somewhat stabilized. Um, I think people are getting used to seeing their usage through the meter and know exactly what they're using and and um also uh the meters that this comes from are our master meters. So if people have leaks in their system, it's counted here. But things are being tightened up, because people have the technology now to see that they have a leak. So um if you can go to the next slide. This is just looking at it from a different way, from our, our, the usage from our main wells. Um, and then from, from Dry Creek and the Springs, Four Creek, and then our CUP water. Uh, we did use our full allocation, and then a little bit this year, we went over by twenty seven acre feet. But with our three-year rolling average, it's, it's not an issue at all. And it's, it's not like an instant reaction when Greg tells him to shut it down. It takes a minute. So that's, he, his intention was to hit that seven seventy. Um, but it, there's just that little bit of delayed reaction, which is just not an issue, really. So you can see that the, the water available from Dry Creek and the Springs, because of the low snowpack, um has fallen over the last three years.
Okay, so that's not, so when, what I'm looking at, the decrease, it's not a decrease in usage of those sources, it's a decrease in the source?
Yeah, because we use that water first, because it's the cheapest. Next, we would use our CUP water, because we pay for it, whether we use it or not. And then after that would be our wells. Um, Four Creek, it it wa- it didn't drop off as much as um Dry Creek did. Um, but yeah, the year reflects that, just with the low snowpack. Uh, next slide, Ryan. Just looking at it a different way, where, in a bar graph, where the water comes from. Um, next slide. And then just our trends. The trend on Dry Creek and the Springs, it's not really a use thing, like the mayor just mentioned. It's just, it seems like we get less and less um over time. We need, we really rely on good snowpack uh to help our PI system, just like most of our neighboring cities do as well. Um, and that's really it. It was a rough year. It wasn't just a rough year for us, all over most of the state. And Idaho was terrible in a lot of, lot of places, and it's mostly weather related. So. Um, it definitely exposes issues in your system and weaknesses and.
Deficiencies.
Lack of redundancy and different things like that, that can be handled in, in most cases, but it does cost money, so. Um, anybody have any questions about that?
I had a question. Um, I know we implemented um metering. Can you point to the year and then see, has that impacted our usage at all?
So.
If you go back to the first graph, I noticed like we dropped.
Yeah.
Where was that? The very first one? Maybe this one?
That was six years back.
Yeah, maybe here. This is a good one, Ryan.
Yeah, so we've really had metered use for two fully uh irrigation seasons. Before that, there are meters in, but we weren't billing off the meters.
Because you were waiting for a hundred percent?
It just took a while to get everything implemented and in the system, in the billing software, and it was a little.
Right, glitchy.
Just to get everything in place. But now we have two years' worth of data, which has been great.
Have, have we seen a change, though, in usage with the metering, or just, what what would you say is the impact from metering? And I know it was a state mandated, so.
I mean, I, I think if you went on a little more granular analysis and looked at the individuals, you'd have some that it didn't change anything and some that it did. But overall, you know, like I said, we went up one point eight five percent. But on a uh, a hot year, really dry, very little, if any, rain through the summer. Um, I think we did about, I mean, the the city, to me, didn't look like it wasn't green, like it wasn't being irrigated, like we were in a total drought. I thought it still looked good. Uh, but we, we did have some issues where we had to ask people to come back.
So I think, from what I remember, wasn't it twenty twenty three that we implemented our um fee schedule for metering? Or was it twenty twenty?
Let's see. I was thinking it was two, we've had two full years.
Yeah, so twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And this is the third year. So even though it shows that it went down in twenty twenty three, I think that was the year where we had like banner, snowpack. So it's kind of hard to tell from year to year. Um, like, I don't think there's a massive conservation effort going on, but they're using what I think, you know, you know, you look at some of these, you know, it's kinda hard to tell, like, it, yes, there are some years where usage goes down, but it could be that there's so much water in our natural sources in the creeks that we don't ever have to, you know, people overuse, because they're like, oh, my gosh, record snowpack. So there's a lot of other things that are affecting it than just the metering. But um I think.
Yeah, two years of data is not enough to create a trend by any means. I didn't realize it was that recent, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, we've had two years.
No, you need like five days, five years of data.
So I think with Saratoga Springs, they like, their fee schedule was overly aggressive, and because of that, there was more conservation that happened. And because the conservation happened, they had to change their fee schedule again, because they were underfunded, right? So there's, I think we just kinda need to sit and wait and see what the trend is. And then also, we do have building going on, and there's more homes that are coming on, and so you have to take that into effect. Maybe what we need to do is also have a number of, or a breakout of usage per average household or something. You know, so we have an idea of what the trend for water usage is in our city. That, I mean, is that something?
I think it takes a few more years. I didn't realize it's only been two, two or three years. Like, I think we need a few more years of data to ever make any conclusions.
Meters were collecting data before that, but customer wasn't being billed off.
Right.
So we probably have three years' worth of actual data, but the one, I think you can discount it, because they weren't paying.
There was um a.
They were paying, but not.
There was a public comment at one point, and um, and I was curious about that, saying that we, we do have the resource, but our delivery system is deficient in some areas. And so um I I did take that water rate class, and they said you build your system for peak. And so um looking at our peak usage was really back here in the blue, which is twenty twenty, must have been a drought or something. So like, how do I, how do I ask this a better question? So we, back here in twenty twenty, we could get that, or we could use even more water than what we did this year? Like, we, we had more capacity in the system, or?
Go, go two gra- graphs down, Ryan. Let me look at something. So that was twenty twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's home, so they irrigated more. I don't.
Oh, because of COVID?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious about that. What?
I don't recall the weather that year.
Okay.
No, well, it's a lot more wells, right? You look at the well usage, it's equivalent to what happened in twenty eighteen.
That's true. Look at the wells.
So it's definitely usage.
Yeah, so that's a good point. So if we wanna really see the, something um neutral to weather, what I want, or when do we need to supplement what, so the weather provides the red, right, and the, the blue is supplementing what the weather is, when it comes short. Is that right?
Yes.
So, so a very good indication, if we had a wet year. If you look at three years back, twenty twenty three, we only used four hundred and seventy six acre feet of CUP water, and our well usage was a hundred and twenty five acre feet. That tells you it was a good year.
Wet year.
Yeah.
And then our, our, um Dry Creek has like a thousand, I don't remember what our metric is here, but a thousand more, which is like nearly a third more than in a dry year of twenty twenty one. Okay. Yeah, this is helping me understand, like, where the, what are the levers that are being pulled to meet capacity, so. Um, one of the things that, when I went on our tour, that Greg shared was, like, I, I felt like when I saw these numbers, I'm like, that doesn't reflect the, sort of the angst that we had all summer about, like, cutting back and stuff, because we actually used more water. But it was because Greg explained that we didn't have rain from um a day in May to a day in August. Do you remember the dates, Brent? It was this long stretch. And so we were strictly a hundred percent relying on irrigation, which really stressed out the system. Like, we had no days where people were sort of turning off their water or anything like that. So even though our, we used more water, you know, it it seems like counterintuitive that we ended up using less, using more water, even though we were asked to cut water back. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but another, another factor is, we had, like, the last couple years, we've had around thirty new homes. I think it was three years ago, we had over seventy. And those, a lot of those homes are taking two years to build. So they were probably doing landscaping this year for that big year. So that's another factor as well. A new landscape tends to take more water than the mature landscape, just they're watering multiple times a day and.
Okay.
So that, that could be a factor as well.
Okay, that was great.
Do you happen to know how many people use water above that baseline on the rate structure, a percentage?
Um, I don't, but it would be an interesting one to.
Whether that has adjusted over the years?
Yeah. I'm sure there are some, because revenue is up, and so they pay into those kind of penalty tiers and we get more revenue, so. But we'll have to see if we can run some kind of report to show that. There should be something there.
So to Chrissy's point about deficiencies, in twenty eighteen and in twenty twenty, it shows we used almost twice as much well water than in twenty twenty five. So when planning for the highest water usage year, which was twenty twenty, what was the history of that, and were we not meeting demand?
So I think one thing you have to remember with that, it's not like flipping a switch and getting as much water as you can in a short period of time out of wells. It was likely drawn out more through the year, where right now, the the difference is, we're able to take the CUP water over an extended period of time. It's replacing well water.
So Jess, if you look at that in twenty eighteen, the well water, and if you look at twenty twenty five well water and you add the CUP water, it's pretty much, it's, it's pretty equivalent to that year. Does that make sense?
Right, and my point is, in twenty eighteen, we met demand, correct? Even without CUP water?
Right, but so, right, but like, we have a situation here where the, one of the biggest producers is the Healy Well. We can't take CUP and Healy Well water at the same time. That's why we upsized the pipes along Canyon Crest. That's part of a multi-year project that will take everything up to the North State, so that we can and have that ability for the entire city to be able to service that. But um right now, it's throttled.
And also.
And I think that was also the year that we also started, did we start conservation then, or was it the year? I'm just trying to think when they did the, when we had to go to odd and even days and.
We've actually been doing that for off this graph.
For a while. Is it more than that? Okay. But it seems like there were times, I don't know what years, when we had alerts. But this isn't the first year that we've had alerts where the city has asked us to stop.
The other thing I learned with the tour with um, with Greg Kimmich and James, or is his last name James?
That's his first name.
James, okay. Um, was that even though we have water that we, we can get to certain areas, there's other areas of the city that are uh are experiencing a bigger deficiency. So it is actually hard to see the deficiencies when you look at everything in aggregate. You actually have to break it down by zones. And that's where the issues are coming, is certain zones are deficient by um a very um, a, a large percentage, and other zones like, so it's hard to see that in aggregate. And that, he, he explained, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. I love that saying. So it's, it's hard to see that, but there's certain zones that are um experiencing a lot of, a lot more pressure on the system because of the deficiency. And we can't get the water where those deficiencies are, because of the way our system is designed to work with gravity, so. Can't, you can't, um, how do I wanna say, manage gravity. It has its own rules.
Yeah, it does.
But gravity's cheap.
And gravity's cheap.
Any other? I just want, well, that's just for my information. So on the west side, over there, international, you know, the far west side, what, what well is supplying that?
There's not, there's not one over there. So there's a booster pump just above the intersection of four hundred West and Westfield Road that, that pulls water from the zone that we're sitting in here, where all the big wells are, and the CUP water comes in. And it pushes water up that way. And then on the top side of that zone, there's a PRV that drops water from the high zone, which is served by the reservoir going into the rodeo grounds, into the middle zone, which is the west side. So it, it doesn't have its own source. And it, it has some struggles too. So there's some improvements planned to remedy that. But it's, it's, it's more capacity in pumps to pull water from.
I was just thinking, there's that individual that came back, came in a, a month or two ago, and from that side, that was talking about that. And, and, and how it pertained to the Healy Well, or not the Healy Well, but the Heritage Hills Well that was going in. Is, is there anything with the Heritage Hills Well that helps that? Or are we still experiencing the same pump issue? I mean, the bottleneck really is our pump station.
Um, it's a pump station, but the Heritage Hills Well would pump into the high zone. And so if there's enough water serving that area, the remainder could drop into the middle zone, which is the bulk of the west side.
And give it more pressure.
So, so kinda, if you imagine, just, just a couple of houses below Lakeview Drive and up is the high zone. is the high zone on that side of town, and then halfway up Fort Canyon.
Would you ever put a, would you ever put a well over that?
That's where I live.
We look, yeah. We.
I've sent Shane some videos.
Jason?
I've sent Shane some videos of my little sprinklers just trickling, like, drops trickling out.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's just interesting to see if that will fix the problem, or if there really is a problem pumping up there and creating pressure that way versus the other way.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we own land out there. It's up on the hill. We end up drilling deeper, but we do own land there.
So you're saying the Heritage Hill Well will allow for, to fix the problem that?
Yeah, because he's above.
It could help that. Like, Lakeview Drive has low pressure. And part of it is just simply due to elevation. So if, if static pressure here is eighty pounds, when the system's at full demand, the dynamic pressure might be like fifty-five or sixty, just because everybody using it at the same time. So, Lakeview Drive probably has forty-five or fifty pounds, and then you drop, say, twenty or twenty-five off that, they're, they're starting to get into the thirty-five, forty-pound pressure and sometimes less. So, a lot of it is elevation.
Yeah, I've talked to these guys. I mean, lots of people have talked to the city and I, I turn, I mean, I have my automatic sprinklers basically turned off, and I like, figure out when, when is everybody else not watering, and then I try and squeeze in some watering. You can't run it at night when you're supposed to run it, because it
Yeah.
it's literally just a trickle.
And most residents up there are aware of it, and we've just said water during the day. So.
Well, I have to listen. I just hope it fixes it for him. I don't know where he got the one and a half million dollar price tag originally, but I don't think that was ever it, but I hope that fixes it.
Well, and have we evaluated a well on that side of town? Because you said it, it's higher up, but then gravity is affordable, so it may cost more at the front end, but over time, if you're not pumping it and you're using gravity, and you're also now can do what you need to do in that part of town. Have we, I'm just saying, have we evaluated a well there if we have property and we have a problem?
We haven't. Um, like, one of the, one of the reasons the Heritage Hills site is nice, we have a twelve, I think it's a twelve-inch pipe in Heritage Hills Drive. So we have a big pipe to be able to get the water to the reservoir. Where if it was on a street that has a six-inch pipe, we'd probably have to include additional piping as well.
But that's, is that moving the water up from Heritage Hills? To get to the reservoir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Well, and we have to pump it out of the ground, so.
Right.
That, gravity doesn't help us with that either. So the pumps have to run to get it out of the wells.
And if you've got a, you know, difference of pumping a thousand feet and fifteen hundred feet, that's going to be an increased cost, all these pumps, all these wells, it costs money to run them. And so if we have a year like twenty twenty-three, fiscally, it's a lot better for us. It's, you know, Dry Creek, Springs, um, Fort Creek, those are pretty much gravity-fed, unless you go up to some of the culinary stuff, but, and then CUP will pump in, but.
And just thinking of dollars in twenty twenty-three, you know, we had to pay for CUP water that we didn't end up using, but we also didn't have pumping costs that year. So, you know, we had some, but not as much for a hundred and twenty-five acre feet.
That was the other thing I learned too, is our electric bill is quite substantial.
Yeah, it would, it would make most people faint if they got that bill in their house.
Very expensive.
So in a good year like twenty twenty-three, when we're saving money because of the weather and the runoff, you just take the fees that residents are paying and apply them, just roll them over to the next year to keep the fees stable?
Yeah.
The only time the fees are adjusted is based on a study that looks at the trends.
Well, we, uh, when we passed, when the council passed the fee structure, I think it was a five-year plan if I remember right, that it would go up like, I think it was three percent per year. So each January, we've, um, implemented that increase. And we're probably three years into that.
This may be outside the scope of this report, but, uh, again, attending that class on the water study, what, what ideally, or what is the philosophy or the mechanism is, to come up with the fees is to build in infrastructure changes. So, is that, um, we've been collecting fees on the new rate structure since twenty twenty-one, right?
Uh, I think it's twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, are there any other questions for Shane? If not, let's move on to.
My compliments to the color, the graph, the variety, you know, I'm a visual person, so it was, it was delightful to see so, so many varieties. Or different ways of looking at the same information. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to action discussion items. Um, we have resolution A for the fire station, um, two oh two, concept design. We've got Mr. Littlewood here also, who is the designer.
Yep, and then I think Chad and Preston from Navigator on Zoom, right?
Oh, are they on Zoom? Okay.
So, um, since our, our last meeting, um, Chad has worked on some things based on comments received and came up with a little bit different version of kind of look and feel the fire station from the exterior point of view. And I don't know, Chad, you want to just take a second and? Yeah, we have it in, you have it up, Ryan, right? And while he's pulling that up, um, one of the things, I wanted to make sure that it was recorded in a way that it wouldn't get lost, whatever the design is the council agrees to. And so, we thought if we adopt it by resolution, that plan's attached that, then it'll be well documented and uh, won't get lost with a different version or whatever, so.
Yeah, so, uh, for the council and for, for those independents, the, the last thing that we issued was basically a link that is provided for options to review. Uh, to have review of site plan and floor plan, it had three various different options. Uh, there was generally good feedback, um, for those options to include account, the feedback we got previously during planning permission. Um, during this course, we were doing, uh, looked at what I could mean for aesthetic, I guess, to the exterior elements with that, uh, maybe make some additional changes. And so that's what we're going to see for you today. So, starting with site plan, uh, we've briefly reduced the entrance along that east side. Um, we looked at a couple of other options of how to do that, but ultimately, it's pretty crucial that we keep the vehicle circulation separate from lower metal fire. So, use them in a romance for turnout for us as well as our own staffing, but we have reviewed, uh, the required, to probably pick up the minimum required for, on, on being a staff. Um, entertained the additional setbacks, uh, the limits of the square footage and orientation of the floor plan changed slightly, as well as the different background. Chair members of the council for how the community center would be played out. Uh, I think with this scenario, we're offering kind of a subtle side of that existing area, the community center for future growth, outdoor space for the area, existing park. Uh, so realistically, on the, we'll call it, for, for ease, the left side of the apparatus bay is the existing fire station that's going to be converted, converted to the community center. That program, uh, was mainly changed, although it was near along more lines, is to get all the beauty places up to the door. So that made it, so that, you know, back to house, kitchen entry.
Uh, supplies and, and food drop off, where the community center itself will be utilized along the south. And so that, therein lies the existing door to the south will open up to the outdoor areas to allow for expansion of the park and potential connection into the Sculpture Garden.
Hey Chad, is the real light on, on your microphone?
Okay, yep. I think it was off before, but something enhanced. Uh, the apparatus bay remains as is. There's, there's not a lot of scope with that currently. And then realistically, what we looked at was kind of consolidating the square footage of the app, of the fire station, which is the new construction to the quote-unquote right of the apparatus bay. Uh, but realistically, none of the program changed. It was just a reallocation of how we wanted to distribute it and get it, uh, adequate for the easements on the site, as well as keeping some of the functionality for outdoor gym space, um, growth, and then the continuity of that kitchen, dayroom, and dining area. And I think the part most people are curious about, right? Go to the next page, Ryan, if you would. So, uh, taking a step back, this has a similar approach in terms of materiality with a large extension of the, we call it evis, probably used the term stucco, of the existing fire station. That's that kind of off-white material that extends to the new construction as well as the existing. Uh, the thought right now is to bring in some warmth on both the new construction as well as the re-cladding of some of the existing apparatus bay with some wood tone, whether that's done with faux wood paneling or metal paneling, um, the idea to give it some, some warmth, like I said. And then inherited to both the historic district as well as fire station design, uh, typically lends itself well to masonry. So we've added some masonry wingscoats around the existing apparatus bay as well as around the new construction towards the east. Um, roof forms changed dramatically from what we showed previously. This feels like it's more in line with the historic guidelines and what we've, what we'd like to see in, in, uh, in connotation with that. Uh, with some subtle nods to new construction as well as kind of conversion of the existing community center with an elevated roof plane and kind of new vestibule that really enhances the sightlines out to the park area to the south. Those are just elevations with various, uh, different shots around the building. I think it's, it's pointed to note that there's been conversations in email and back and forth through messages about a frozen floor plan or a frozen stage. I want to clarify what that means. Um, schematic design is, is when we're going to want the floor plans and design frozen, but that's not intended to say that beyond that, change is unacceptable. Because up to this point, we've only engaged to this level with fire, with city, with councils, and there's going to be a finite additional need of design input needed for the specifics. And as we do that, integrate it with building systems, there's going to be inevitable change regardless. And when I say that, we're talking slight adjustment, massaging of the floor plan, not overall changes of scope, additive square footage, um, new program or new spaces being added. We're talking adjustments of walls, minorly, maybe swings of doors, things like that. So, that's kind of what we're looking at right now. So SD's is, is nearing the end, about in the first week of December. So to keep on track with the schedule that we've gotten, both from Navigate and from the newly brought on CMGC, it would be helpful to the design team if we could get that authority to keep going.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Just a general question. Do we have to put in here anywhere, um, obviously, we have a cell tower that's in this area before? Do we need to think through that as we're doing these layouts with the roads and whatnot?
So, that, so that was Verizon. And we didn't hear from them for a long time after it kind of went through the approval process. We had another carrier start reaching out to us about a cell tower, so we reached out to Verizon and said, hey, we haven't heard from you for a couple of years. You know, kind of went through COVID, and they basically walked away from that plan, so.
So they had a water tower type of cell tower here, but it's no longer, we have to, I mean, if someone's going to come in, it'll be a brand-new plan.
Yeah, so where, where it was previously planned is where the Sculpture Garden is planned now.
So we need to think through it all where garbage is on this, or is that not part of this discussion?
So it's, it's on there. That's the one thing that's.
That doesn't work.
Doesn't, isn't.
It doesn't look like you can back it in very well.
Yeah.
It was a little bit of a selfish move on my part. If you wouldn't mind going back to the site plan, Ryan? Sorry to order you around. I think ideally it would work best if that was aligned with the drive aisle that's running parallel to the community center. That way they can pull through and then directly back in. Depending on where the Sculpture Garden goes, maybe that's for, for the best. I didn't want to turn up the park space, and so if we need to look at a completely different alternative, we could do that as well. I would sure hate to put it right up against the community center. It'd be nice to give it some breathing room away from the building. Um, and then obviously, there was an idea of putting it up near the front, near more to the, what will be the kitchen and food delivery. But being that's off the streetscape, that seems less ideal than we'd like. So, agreed. I think there's.
I think that's one of the little tweaks that will be made as we go.
As a, as a side note, uh, today, actually, civil engineering has got, we've engaged with our structural mechanical electrical engineers as of late, recently. We've started meeting with them offline, so that type of coordination is starting ongoing, is starting to be ongoing. The civil engineers have got back to us with their updated survey, and that's going to be integrated with this design to see everything overlaps and overlays. And I'm sure there'll be that level of adjustments needed as well, but early, early coordination looks pretty good.
And I have two questions. Ryan, I sent you a picture. Is there any ability to remove and bury the power lines that are in front of the fire station? Has that been discussed at all?
We've scratched the surface on that. Um, I know, uh, Navigate has been in, in touch with Rocky Mountain Power on loads and stuff for the new addition and things. Um, that, that is something, I mean, I think we'd have to do that at our expense. But it, I think it would be possible. The one for sure that doesn't make a lot of sense to me is the one that comes off that line coming south towards this building, and then it just seems to kind of dead-end. Um, I think it does feed the relic hall, but it wouldn't be too difficult to switch that up. That one for sure, I think, needs to go away. It would be very nice if we could afford it to bury the other one.
Yeah, there's just one that's really visual in front of the fire station, you know, the one I'm talking about.
Yep.
Um, and then, as part of this motion, do we need to include, um, I don't want this to get lost, which is the history wall. I mean, we've touched on it, but we haven't really solidified it as part of the plan, where the bricks might reside. I sent you guys all an email discussing the importance of a history wall with some concept ideas. So, um, I know we're not doing paint color and carpet and all of that, but this is a key element of the community center is at least calling it out at some level.
Do you want a history wall, or do you want to do what's already been done over in Heritage Park is, like, some kind of a, um, what are they called?
Like a monument?
A monument with the bricks that has kind of, you know, with like a metal inset that kind of, you know, talks about what used to be here, maybe a picture of it and have that. Are you thinking?
I would like it to be more than that because we have a lot of great history that the story isn't really told anywhere in one place. We have some of it told at Moyle Park. We have.
You're talking about the history of the entire city, not just the history, okay.
But then we would include, like, those bricks, like, this used to be the Olson property or this, you know, one of the original Pioneer Homes, and the bricks would be part of that. So it would be more encompassing.
I kind of think we're squeezing a lot into a small space. I can't imagine one more thing.
Well, it's just a wall, so think of it like wallpaper. So it's wallpaper that tells a story.
Or if you're sticking a brick on it.
If you look at what it is, so, I mean, you're not building a structure, you're just, you can even have the brick be a veneer, a part of it, or, you know, a replica. There's just ways to capture the history and the story.
If I may.
I'm not sure, like, that I'm in agreement, because I feel like, um, we have Moyle Park, which has a great history of Alpine City. And if we, if we want to put more history about that particular Olson House, as was mentioned in our public comment or something, I feel like we need to sort of con- consolidate where we're putting historic things, and I think it's a great fit on Moyle, at Moyle Park. I don't know, um, if any, it, it wouldn't fit interior, but if we did something of that nature, I mean, also going through the relic hall, there's history there. I just don't see a, why we need another spot for, for history. I'd like to have them all consolidated specifically at Moyle Park, because that's on our historic register and it's more likely to be preserved and viewed in that way, you know, like, this is sort of out of place to put something historic in the middle of this building versus trying to do, acknowledge our history at Moyle Park. That, that's just.
Except this is our town center and this is our historical town square, and this is really where it all began. It's where.
It's where the fort was, and, you know, it doesn't have to be obtrusive, you know, invasive to the space. It's actually, you see these walls all over businesses and hallways.
I think, you know, if it's what you are describing as something additional to the wall, I, you know, I agree. We've got history spread throughout. We have a, you know, we have a park that's dedicated towards history. We have relic hall here that has a lot. We've got the Alpine days book that's out there. We also have in City Hall, we have a lot of the old paintings that kind of shows how it, it looks like. You know, that's something that we can maybe push down further. It doesn't sound like there's total agreement either way. Personally, you know, for me, I love the idea of using the bricks from Monument in the front, in the yard, as people go through and just kind of like, hey, this is where, you know, the home is, and maybe we can work with, this is a Wooton, about it. But that's not something that, as far as the concept of the building, that's, to me, that's more the nitty-gritty. It's like talking about, you know, what kind of furniture do we want? What kind of paintings do we want? That's also perfluous. Right now, I think we're just trying to get the concept down so that we can move forward with engineering, we can move forward with some of this other stuff. Are you worried that-
I just don't want that to get lost, so if it is going to be a monument outside, I don't want that to get overlooked and overstepped.
Yeah, I don't think it will. I think most of us are on board with, you know, doing some kind of homage to the original building that was there, and, you know, what the significance of it was.
And maybe something to the, this being the original town, you know, the original fort.
Yeah, not to mention that that will be a theme of the Sculpture Garden as well. That's why they chose that location. So I, I feel like we can tie it in. I just don't necessarily think it needs to fit inside the building, but like, to Carla's point, that's something we could defer till a later time and work on some agreement.
So the motion would need to include some kind of historical element or historical reference, and we're not going to pin it down, whether it's inside or outside, but again, I mean, I know we can all be aligned, but we have a new council coming in, and then things get lost if we don't include it in motions.
I kind of think we're, the motion and the, the concept design is their assignment, and our assignment is the historic side. So to, to sort of include it in the motion is not their lane. Like, they're not going to be implementing that, so that's just my personal opinion.
May I interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just to satisfy your concern, and I understand that we want it to be on, on note for the council, the council meeting. I, I have no advantage to, to leave something out that's of the council's want. So, as, and you're right, it is a later decision down the road in terms of phasing, but it's been noted as a priority for us, so when that time comes, it's, it's not, there's no advantage for me to dismiss it. There's a handful of things that could be deferred to the city if they want. After our scope is done and the building is complete, I'd rather tie as much as possible so it's a cohesive design and it's uniform. I've seen it go the other way too many times, that it's not advantageous for anybody, and it doesn't look good for us as the design team either. It may not be the right time, but we, we have those skill sets at our disposal to use for environmental graphics, signage, those types of things, and how we want to implement that beyond just a placard on the wall. And so it's-
Chad sent that out since this meeting has started, so we have some, in our email, some examples that we probably haven't even reviewed yet on it.
The examples were from Councilmember Remler. But, but I, I added our graphic designer to that, just so she could get some context, and we can continue the conversation.
And another thing, this has been mentioned before, but Chad Jones with Navigate and probably some of his other staff were involved with the Lehigh Public Safety Building, and they have a similar wall to what's being described here, and so we could draw off their experience, and Chad's online here, but we could draw off their experience on how they handled that and integrated that into the-
Well, I think, it's, it's been expressed here tonight, just from public comment, but the path to determining what happens with that home and how we integrate its materials is in process. It's not decided. It may be a situation where those materials are best utilized as in an interior setting rather than exterior setting, or in a horizontal application rather than a cladding vertical situation. So we want to be respectful what those materials are and restore them in the most appropriate way. Again, it's a continuation of this process that we are on the early stages of still.
Jessica, did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I will do.
I did, I did have one more comment.
Go ahead.
I, I heard back from some of the neighbors who had spoken to us before, and they are mixed feelings, right? Because they didn't want any parking on the east side, but I, I continue to, you know, reiterate that we want, we're trying to separate that from the, separate from the public space, but they did appreciate the preservation of the grass area and all of that, as well as the change in the exterior in matching the historic homes around there. So, I didn't want to leave that out, because I feel like they, they have some strong feelings and, and are, no, no ones that were going to be 100% happy, but I think we did well by reflecting their feelings as best we could. So, just wanted to let everyone know, the neighbors. There is a home going up for sale, which is breaking my heart, but with unhappiness about this east side, but that's, we, I just don't know what more we could have done. So anyways, I just want to know that the neighbors are what I want to say. They, they're not enthralled, but they're also not going to protest, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution R. 2025-28, approving the concept plan for the Alpine Fire Station Number 202 project as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been proposed by Councilman Remler, seconded by Councilman Law. Any further discussion? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thion, yes.
Brent Remler, yes.
Okay, resolution passes to Item B, Resolution R. 2025-29.
Okay, so, you should have received an email yesterday, I think early afternoon, with the amendment to the ILA for the Lone Peak Public Safety District that reflects what happened at the board meeting yesterday morning. It's, it's a little bit of an extension of Option 2 that was included in the packet that went out on Friday. The difference is, on Item 5, second-to-last paragraph, some language is added. Well, there were some language that was taken out in the previous paragraph that says that the formula starts in 2012. It, that wasn't relevant anymore because of where we're at in time. But the addition was, unless the cities agree otherwise, and a little bit of this language is there, Steve actually kind of crafted this language, "Changes to the formula shall not take effect or be used to calculate the city's assessments until the first fiscal year after the new formula are approved by the cities by way of amendment of this agreement." So it was voted on yesterday. It was unanimous decision from the four board members, two from each city. So this is what is being, was here tonight before you, and then next Tuesday, we'll be at the Highland City Council meeting. We do have one of the Highland council members here with us tonight, so we welcome him. So the process would be to approve this, and then Highland, let's see, I'll give them the dates, at their December 3 meeting, I believe. I don't have my cover sheet in front of me. They'll address the new proposed formula second, December 2nd, and then on January 13th, it would come to our meeting. But it would go to the board first, a week from tomorrow, on the 19th. And so the board, if this is approved, the board would make a recommendation to the cities for another amendment to the ILA, considering a change to the fire formula, so.
The minutes are, it's December 2nd.
December 2nd for you guys, yeah. So that's what we have before us tonight, is this change.
Mayor, I might, I might just add, I don't know how it got by staff and the board and two attorneys, but both of these proposals, Option 1 and Option 2, have in the title 2023 amended and restated interlocal agreement. It should say 2025. It notes that the amendment is in November 25, but it doesn't say it in the title.
You're right.
Okay, are there any questions regarding this?
So if I'm following the, the basic point here is that we're including the formula in the interlocal agreement, and then the voting and all of the timing is aligned. Is there more to it than that?
So, the interlocal before, yeah, I think there was just confusion. We were, Alpine was interpreting the interlocal the way that it was written one way, Highland was interpreting it a different way, and this just kind of brings it more in alignment with clearer language, that this is the order of procedure.
So this is just updating the interlocal agreement, it's not changing?
No, that will be next, yeah, that'll be our next meeting, which will be in January.
The big update's really that before it said, the governing board, it requires four votes of the governing board to make a change to the formula. Now, the governing board may recommend, as part of the annual budget or otherwise, changes to the formula. And so, as Steve explained in our meeting and Rob from Highland, the way it was written, whether it was intended or not, it's like that, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, it's like that authority was delegated to the board. And so we have two board members. Highland has two, and it feels, it makes more sense this way to me, where that board would make a recommendation to each council, and then the councils would approve it as a whole, rather than two members.
What constitutes a recommendation?
That was discussed.
Just, just what happened at the last meeting, the board recommended Option 2 as an amendment. As a matter of, you know, as a matter of fact, this is an interlocal agreement, it's an agreement between two cities. If the cities unanimously decide through their councils to amend the agreement, they don't have to go through the governing board. But, what this is clarifying, before it said, it seemed to say that you had to get four votes of the governing board, and so Option 1 says, yes, we like to delegate that authority to the board, but we're only going to require three votes, but one from each city. Option 2 says, we want the board to make a recommendation because they're in the trenches, and then the city councils can act based upon that recommendation, they can reject the recommendation, they always have the authority, whether it's stated in the agreement or not, to amend the agreement if they, if both parties agree. But this just clarifies that, and the board recommended Option 2, which is that procedure.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. I'm just, I'm just asking what, so you have a board of four people, two people from each city. Let's say two people, one from Highland, one from Alpine, want to make one recommendation, and one from Alpine, and one from Highland, one of, so it's split two, two on the board about, about what recommendation they want to make? Or two people want to make a recommendation and two people don't? So what constitutes a recommendation? That's my question.
So the chair makes the, the chair makes the deciding vote, tie-breaking vote? But it's kind of like the planning, they kind of explained it at the meeting, that it's more like the planning commission making a, a recommendation for approval or not. It's not binding, the city councils still have to approve.
Yeah, no, I totally get that.
So-
So, yeah, whether it's a recommendation to approve or deny or whatever, just kind of think of it like the way that-
Well, I mean, the recommendation would be, we recommend this happens.
Yeah.
And then the city councils would vote on it, but I'm just saying-
But the, the chair is the deciding vote.
Yeah, so, and that chair we have alternating every year?
Every other year, yeah.
So it just depends on-
What year?
What year it is.
Yep. And at any given time, though, the city councils can, you know, you can either vote to approve it or deny it.
Yeah, we could, like this, we could, the city councils could make a difference.
So if one city council approves and the other denies, it ain't going to happen.
That's right.
Okay, so that answers my question, if, if both city councils need to approve it? And there's no voting, like, supermajority or anything, it's just a simple majority by the city councils? And then if, and it's in the, it's in the verbiage that one can't approve and one disapprove, and move, there's no moving forward until both approve?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's in the amendment language of the agreement.
Yes. For those of us aren't, I understand numbers, but words get a little fuzzy. So, yeah, I, I was trying to understand the before-after and, and the idea here, so thank you for taking that ex, extra time to explain it. Okay.
Jason, this was a unanimous, right, on this Option 2?
Yes. Again, this has nothing to do with the formula at all, this is just, because the way it was set before, we had Highland, Cedar City in, it just doesn't make sense, you have to have it unanimous to, but the one thing, I do have a question on this, is this the same, Option 2, the same one that Highland City got? I mean, is it exactly the same as what Highland City's voting on?
Yes.
Answer me this, so I think Option 2 is the, the choice we did. On page six there, I'm trying to understand a little bit, the thing that can, didn't concern me, but, but Steve Doxy mentioned, the way it was written before is, these changes, if they do happen, would happen right away. You know, if we approved it in the beginning of January, the way that we took it, the way the modifications were, that would happen right away. So we had a conversation of saying that, no, let's push it back to the beginning of the fiscal year, and I thought we all agreed to that, but I'm looking in here, I don't see where that's in here. Can you explain that?
Your, your packet has the older version in it. Shane sent out a new version that had that language that you suggested, based on your suggestion, council member.
Yeah, I've been looking at the wrong one.
Shane sent it.
There's a paper copy.
It shouldn't say a fiscal year, it should just say-
The next, the start of the next fiscal year.
After the-
And the fiscal year starts July.
The first fiscal year after the new formula are approved.
I don't have that one in front of me.
So, yeah, we didn't have it until yesterday, so that's why it's-
So the insertion was unless the cities agree otherwise, because the cities can als, always agree to make the, the change effective immediately or whenever they say, or spread it out over time, a number of years.
So that's, that's the choice we have moving forward, Kelly, is if we approve this, we're just changing the voting. The one thing that we didn't, what we found out, I mean, it really is 100, over $140,000 savings to have after the fiscal year versus approving what was originally presented to us. Those are real dollars. But in addition to that, in talking with their, even their attorney, you know, there is the option to phase this in over time if we approve it on the, on the council as well. Obviously, Highland City has to approve that as well, but those are discussions we would have after this.
It just is such a big, yeah, the discussion that we had, it was just such a huge disruption to our budget.
I don't think your mic's on, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. It's just that, it makes a huge impact on our budget that was not originally budgeted. But I really liked the idea of phasing it in too, and he says that's not unheard of, that he's heard of that happening.
I like, I like the email, the, what's written in the email, so whoever does this motion, make sure you include Shane's email.
The other thing that might throw you off just a little bit, Jason, the, the part in the current interlocal that's adopted, dealing with the fiscal year, was in the previous paragraph from what it is now. So, it actually threw me yesterday when, because we just got the language email and so we inserted it, and then Rob actually caught it and said, actually, it needs to go here. And so we, we do have the same version in front of us, so.
I'm looking at that now, thanks.
I thought we, as a council, we brought up some good things, especially reading the minutes, which, I appreciate that. And one of them was to create some stability, not that we would be restricted from looking at it, but that maybe there's just a routine review of the formula. Would that- review of the formula. Would that be something that you put in the interlocal agreement or just something you have as a policy?
If, if you want to make sure it happens, it needs to be in the agreement. This, this is an amendment to the process. This isn't an amendment of the formula. And that's, that will be the next one. Presumably, it's the 2026 amendment, because I think we don't have a meeting until 2026 to approve whatever formula is proposed. But.
Is the formula written into the agreement, though?
Currently.
So we're going to amend it here on how the approval process. And the next step would be to amend the formula itself.
Yes.
Yes, because the way that it's written now, you would need a unanimous vote and it wouldn't, there was a disagreement in how that would work. So clarify the language. Then you can have a vote on or, um, have a recommendation for a new formula. And then you would vote on that under this new ILA. But we couldn't do it simultaneously without getting the four votes.
Right. No, I understand that. So I, that part I did understand. But how, i- if, if, did you discuss that first of all as a board? In any way, shape or form, that there would be a sort of a, what do I want to say? Like a, a sta- a stabilizing period and then an automatic, I want to say a renewal or review or something so that it's not, um, we're not redoing this every single year?
I think the discussion probably would fit better with the next amendment.
Okay. I just, was there any discussion from the board is my question?
Well, the only thing that's in there is that every five years, if you look at the screen in front of you, is the relative portion contribution of the cities. And if it's there, then you may also change based on the consent of the governing board. So there is that, but it doesn't say every five years you have to take a look at the new, you know, take a look at the formula. They're just saying, okay, if this, it's kind of like a trigger, right?
Right. Yeah. Cause so no one.
My thing. No.
So there's a trigger to say if it, there was a dramatic, a material shift in the, in how it's the, the end result, you would trigger a look at it, right?
And, and that particular paragraph's actually dealing with board members, but it could be a similar.
Oh, thanks for pointing that out. It's talking about the.
No, it's the budget. No, it's talking about, well, it's talking about the budget.
Contribution of the cities.
To the budget. If your budget amount goes up by a percent, the number of representatives on the board for that city may also be changed.
Oh, you know what? I read that wrong. No, you're right. No, you're right. Thank you for catching that.
Okay. So we will discuss, if, if, so, um, at this point, we're going to vote on the, the process change. And then next time, we're going to talk about the formula. And if that's something that needs to be discussed, is that what happened at the board level?
Yeah, I would suggest that you have the board members bring that up at the board meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
Yes, it will happen at the board meeting and then they'll vote on the recommendation.
Right.
Then it will come to city council in January and then you will discuss as a city council and then vote on it.
Right. So I'm, what I'm saying is I need to.
Maybe you can send it to Jason and Carla, who are the, the board members.
Okay. And Jason will be serving until the end of the year. Okay.
How does, I mean, what I don't understand is I'm sure there's going to be a back and forth that happens after that. Meaning, Carl and I might be on this, you know, and we might vote for something and it could process, but then it comes back here and we say, well, this needs to be added to it or this. What's the process after January to have those back and forth between the cities?
It would be a negotiation with the, uh, executive director and assistant executive director and the attorneys would be in my mind. But I'm sure the other board members could be involved. It would be, you know, if, if, for example, Alpine says, we want the formula to be X and Highland says, we want the formula to be Y, then there won't be a change unless they can come to some common ground. And so those negotiations, you know, would take place in that manner. Would be my guess.
Including how it's implemented, whether it's over a period of years or start a fiscal year.
Sure.
And, and I think item 13, there, there was a little bit of change in the language there. Uh, the version you have in the packet is, I think, a redlined version that shows the changes. Um, it discusses, as, well, I think this sentence, the cities may amend this agreement by mutual consent, provided that any such amendment must be made in writing and approved. And then it goes on. So, so that could go back and forth like that.
Yeah. So to approve an amendment to an interlocal agreement, you have to follow the Interlocal Cooperation Act provisions, which require the signatures of, or the approval of both city councils. They have to be recorded. They have to be approved by each, each city's attorney. There are just some requirements that you have to jump through before any kind of amendment would be effective. And that paragraph 13 that Shane is referencing is just sort of clarifying or tracing that, those requirements. I might just suggest, if there is a motion made, uh, we ought to specify in the motion whether option one or option two is being adopted, because the resolution itself doesn't say which one. And so we want to specify, specify that in the motion.
Okay. Are there any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So maybe even option two as amended or something like that.
Yeah. If you want, yes, if you want to include the amendment that was approved by the board, yes, you'd have to say as amended or recommended by the board.
So option two in our statement doesn't have all the changes. So when we say option two, we're talking about the full, all the changes that came in your email, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is really one.
Right.
Paragraph.
Paragraph.
Yeah. Option two is an entire agreement, but then the email just modified that one paragraph.
So the rest of the changes are in the packet.
Right, right. But that's what I mean is option two is expansive. It's not just the paragraph. It's the paragraph that was modified by the email.
Yeah. And I think what can nail it down is Steve's suggestion of the version of option two that was recommended by the board.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'm wondering if I can. I heard some moaning when I said that.
No, she said slowly.
Okay.
That's what we, we like.
I move to approve resolution R 2025 dash 29, um, selecting option two as amended and approving the amendment to the Lone Peak Public Safety District interlocal agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilwoman, excuse me, Hanneman? Excuse me. Hanneman, any further discussion?
Did that say as recommended?
As recommended by the.
The option two.
You said as amended, but you ought to say as recommended by the board.
Okay. Yeah, as recommended by the board.
Yes.
You okay with the.
Yep.
Amendment to your.
Amendment, yes.
Okay. And Chrissy, are you okay with the amendment?
Um, I'd like to hear it reread, please. Okay. So Jason moved, um, to approve resolution 2025 dash 29, selecting option two as recommended by the Lone Peak Public Safety Board in approving the amendment to the interlocal agreement, seconded by Chrissy.
Way better than I did. So thank you.
I second.
I'm trying.
I second that.
Okay.
Amendment to the motion.
Again, it's been moved by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman. There's no further discussion. We'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Ron Rummler, yes.
Okay, resolution passes. Let's move on to item three, resolution R 2025 dash 27.
I'd like to make a motion. Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, please. Just do it.
That's fine.
No, you can.
No, just do it.
No, I'm just, this is reappoint Jeff Davis to the planning commission. Yep.
I move the resolution R 2025 dash 27, appointing Jeff Davis to another full term as a member of the planning commission.
Is there, okay, it's been moved by Councilman Rummler, seconded by Councilman Law. Any further discussion? Let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Ron Rummler, yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Resolution passes. Excuse me, staff reports. Chief? No updates or anything?
He said none.
Okay, let's move on. Chief Patton? Ryan?
Quick one. We have been working with a gentleman named Ron Clegg to look at getting a grant for the rodeo arena. Uh, he just got back to us this week on his cost. He would help us with the grant. It's the RRI grant for the Utah Door Rec folks. Um, his, his services are between five and $7,000 just to, to get this grant. Linden did it a couple years ago. He said it's almost an identical application. So I think it could be pretty good for that. Uh, this would, uh, make improvements to the rodeo arena, the, the dirt itself, uh, repair and replace some gates and fences and pins, uh, create a permanent water source, restroom facilities, uh, excavate some of the area for more parking. Uh, we, we were looking at adding a hundred of those rollout smaller bleachers as part of this as well. And then work on a new announcers booth that's a little bit bigger and safer. Um, those are all the things we'd like to do with this grant, um, whether we can, we can do it with or not with that. But we just wanted to get some direction, make sure we could move forward with.
Did you say he was looking at the Utah state grant or a federal grant?
He said it was the RRI grant through the Utah state folks. So.
Do they cover all of that?
We were going to look and see if that was part of it. He was, that's part of what he would do is, is communicate with them and see, uh, which of, those are just our wish lists of things we want covered. Um, so part of what he would do is, uh, work with either the state or, or other funding options to see if we could get all that taken care of. So.
And Linden's was for sand, right?
Yeah. Yeah. He said, he said a lot of these things that they, that we have in ours, they also did with theirs too. So he thought, he was pretty confident in that.
They also did the restrooms and the, the only thing I think that wasn't covered was the bleachers.
Yeah. And we, we ran into issues that a couple of years ago. So that might.
Restrooms and all of that and talking to their mayor.
He said our, our rodeo arena is way better in Linden. So he thought we should be no.
For sure.
Yeah. That just goes without saying.
Anything else?
Nope. I just wanted to go over that. So, thanks.
Shane?
Let's let Deanne mention our next council meeting to canvass the election and kind of why we haven't given it time yet.
Thank you. So I tried to, our next meeting next week, we, by statute, we have to certify the, the general election by November 18th. So that's next Tuesday. And I tried to clarify with the county when they would have their board of canvas so they can get the details to us, which is the same day. But they're closed today because of Veterans Day. So I was not able to get that info from them and they don't have it posted on their website, the time of the meeting or the schedule. So we'll have to find that from them tomorrow, hopefully. But we need to meet before planning commission, is my understanding, at six.
So we're anticipating something kind of later in the day, but before planning commission?
Okay. I'm going to, I totally forgot about that. I will be out of town. Jason, can you run that meeting? The 18th?
That's, we're not sure yet. Later, late afternoon, the planning commission starts at six. So ideally, it would be before then.
Yeah, it should be. I mean, if I can do it in the, in the evening before six, but not in the middle of the day.
Yeah. We were hoping for like noon, but we, if they don't have their meeting, their canvas meeting at the county until two, Deanne won't have the information. So we'll send out a time once, um, we can nail that down.
I would prefer later in the, I have something at noon that day, but I could cancel it if I had to. I could do it at five though, 5:30.
So we'll figure it out. Send out more information. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um.
Do you need, I'm also out of town. Do you need, um, an anchor, a number of people at the anchor? Or is it okay to zoom? Remind me of the rules.
We're supposed to have a quorum here.
Yeah. So are you going to be in town, Kelly?
Next week?
Next Tuesday. Like five, 5:30 can, will you be?
Five, 5:30 works.
Yeah. Will that work for you, Jess?
Um, my schedule right now is up in the air. So I may have to zoom in also. But is that three people, Jason, Kelly?
Yeah. No, we should be good.
So, uh, one issue is that, uh, the council members are supposed to sign the document. So I think that can be done electronically, would be my guess, but got to be available to do that. But that has to be done on the 18th, right?
Need all the council members to sign? That's impossible.
I give Deanne permission to use my stamp.
Okay. We'll work on the details and.
I've got an auto pin. Just use my auto pin.
Chrissy authorizes Deanne to forge her signature.
No, I do not.
Okay, um, just a couple of things. Uh, we have a, uh, Parks, uh, RFP for a master plan put together that we're going to be sending out like first of next week. Um, if anybody's interested and would like to read it before we send it out, you're welcome to. Um, I think we have the bases covered, you know, inventorying what we have, looking at what we need and, and those things. So, um, just by way of information, our city prosecutor has been Hanson Law, Tucker Hanson. We received a letter from him, both us and Highland. He's been a long time city prosecutor. They're no longer going to do that. Um, so we'll be working with Highland to put out an RFP to fill that, uh, need. Um, some of you might be aware, we had a water main break last night and you might've saw me step out of this meeting. Our guys just finished cleaning up up there and we had another one. A totally different part of town on Ridge Lane. So that's why I stepped out to take that call. Um, so sometimes it's a domino effect. The little bit of water hammer and differences in pressure in the system will find a weak spot and just blow it out. In the, in the case of the one that happened last night, there was a chunk in the bottom of a 10-inch pipe, about, you know, six or so inches in diameter that blew out. And it just destroyed the road in Ford Canyon. So it's, paving this time of year is not a, uh, awesome, but we'll pave it. And then we plan to do some repaving on Metal Arc and International in that area next summer. And so we would just go back and kind of do an overlay on this area, um, next year on Ford Canyon Road. Um, so some people actually, because of the, you, you think the perfect storm never happens. It happened last night. And so some people actually ran out of water because of some various things that happened. Um, so anyway, we got everything back to normal and just in time to have another one. So, um, update on the Burgess Park Pavilion, I sent an email just asking for comments on color. I actually have those samples in here. I, I can, I'll just mention this real quick. Um, we kind of were going on a color scheme. And then I had a thought as I drove by there today, our courts are blue and green. And the color schemes that we were kind of looking at might not match with that. Currently, it's against maroon and tan because we didn't resurface the tennis courts. So it's something that we might want to just relook at the colors in here after this meeting. Um, that's ready in about, it, the structure's ready, but our, our footings are poured, but the columns, uh, will be poured soon. And they want to go, they want to take the structure right from the powder coat or put it on a trailer, bring it here and install it. Um, so they're waiting about a week to powder coat us. We have a few days to pick that color scheme. Um, so give me your thoughts on that, please. Um, I put this very small spreadsheet on your table with project updates. I'm happy to print you an 11 by 17 version of that. I put my glasses on and could kind of read it. So.
It's getting longer.
Anyway, so the color scheme there, green projects are complete, yellow are in progress, white are kind of in the works. And some stuff's been done, but they're not as far along as the others. So let me know if you have any questions there. We did get the, uh, concrete pads poured for the benches and only had vandalism on one of them. Um, but it was kind of rubbed out. Our concrete guy rubbed it out and I think it will be okay. So when our guys get caught up on some other things, they'll get those, those benches installed because we have those here at the shop. Um, for those of you that will still be on the council next year, and we have our two, uh, new here, our new council members, um, we're gonna do something a little bit different, try something on our budget. We'll create a, like, kind of a project sheet, like an information sheet that we'll provide to you. And then we'd ask that your project ideas that you have, that you fill this sheet out and then we can pull those together. And probably, my thought right now is when we have our retreat, that we could go over those in more detail. But if we do that and have more information kind of written down, I think it'll be helpful for everyone. So, rather than like just getting here to this meeting and maybe just starting to think about it or whatever, we ask you what projects you have, you'd have more advanced time to think about that. So, we'll be getting those. We're creating the form and we'll get that out to you, probably in December.
Well, that, will we have some feedback about cost as we prioritize things?
That's, that's one of the things, is we get those, then we can kind of work on the cost side and have that discussion.
Perfect, great.
So. Master plan updates, John from Horox has given us draft updates for the water, PI and sewer master plans. We're reviewing those as staff now. We plan to have him present those at a city council meeting in January. And then that, I think, will line up in a good timeframe for our budget discussions and different things there. Okay, and then we've planned for a new council member training December fourth. Everyone's welcome to attend. It's, it's a good reminder for everybody, I guess, but it's really geared for those coming in. And then, do you remember the date for the league training?
Yeah, December, uh, December sixth is the, I wrote it down. December sixth is in person and December thirteenth is online for the elected officials training.
So, for our new elected officials, we'll get you that information if you wanna attend that. Whatever the fee is or whatever, we'll, the city will cover that and we can help make the arrangements or whatever's needed, so. I think they have a virtual option too.
Yeah, yeah, for the thirteenth, it'll be available online, then they'll have a bunch of different options coming up for like land use training, budgeting, and things like that as well. But this is just newly elected, training that way, so.
Is there any annual or biannual requirement for those of us? Like, or is it just, once you're trained, you're done?
We have to have open public meetings, uh, training annually. I think there's one other that's once in your term, like.
There's a land use, once a term, yeah.
Okay.
Chrissy, you can give the training now.
No, no. I was just talking to our planning commission and he was telling me about training he was doing. I'm like, huh, I don't remember that we had that same training, but that's because I'm not on the commission.
Planning commission has to have four hours of training every year, so that's.
And Ryan invites us to go all the time.
That's what he was talking to me about.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff was telling me about that.
And that's a relatively new thing, probably.
Couple of years, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm corrected, because I think that was, I was thinking of the planning commission training. I don't know that the city council has to have that same training.
Anything else, Shane?
No, oh, I'll just mention our, our project on Canyon Crest Road, the pipe's about, probably about seventy percent installed. They're still on track to be finished by about Thanksgiving. I know it's been an inconvenience. There's just, there's not too many ways around it. There's not really another way around it. In this case, we have to take the existing pipe out and put a new one in. And so, and then there's the high pressure gas main. We can't be within five feet either side of it. So, it's, we're very limited in that forty-two foot of pavement and what we can do, so. I know it's tested a lot of people's patience. It seems like for the first ten days, I came through the red light at Temple Highway and forgot to hang a left. I finally have it down now. But it was just out of habit, you know, so. You know, there's been people on Facebook, I guess, that should be done different or whatever. It's a tough one to flag and detour and we did it well, the way we felt would be the safest.
It's interesting, I do get a lot of people, it's like, why aren't you doing this during the summer when there's no school? And I'm like, because we're using those pipes to run water.
Yeah.
We can't replace it if we're using them. And they're like, oh, okay.
Yeah, and.
And there's no other exit out of, on the east side, so.
And I will mention, it's on the sheet, but we worked with Highland, their staff to put out an RFP for the Canyon Crest improvement project. Those should be due and we'll be getting together to review those, so we don't know exactly what that project will look like. We will as we get into it. Why I'm bringing that up is the project next summer will have a longer duration than this one, so.
So, I know that Utah Power has approached Alpine City to bury some of the power lines in some of the other areas. Is that by, the Canyon Crest power lines, are they by any chance wanting to bury those?
No, the two that they've approached me on is kind of the upper part of Grove Drive and the one that goes up the bottom of Ford Canyon, kind of along Ford Creek.
I'm wondering if you can build that into kind of what we discussed earlier regarding, let's build that into the cost, because I know other cities have done it. And so, let's make this time with MAG work for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any proj, any other questions on any projects that we have going on or where they're, where they stand or anything? Or feel free to look at that. Like I said, if you want an eleven by seventeen copy or electronically, I can send that out or print you a new one.
Thank you, Shane.
Well, you started on the Burgess Park, you were saying that the tennis courts are already painted, but is that something we redo and eventually we could just tie it together?
So, when we resurfaced the basketball court and the pickleball courts, the tennis courts didn't really need it, the surface was still good, so the council made the decision to change the color scheme of the surface, but leave the tennis courts for now and resurface them later. So, the new color scheme is blue and green. The old was tan and kind of a maroon burgundy color.
You love that, it's too different.
If we follow the, the scheme that's kind of been adopted and we have the same blue and green at Creekside Park, what's tan and burgundy now will be blue and green someday.
I see.
And so, thinking of tying the pavilion, which is very close to the tennis courts, into that, I think should be considered.
Brian, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, just being Veterans Day, I just wanna express appreciation and sincere gratitude for everyone who's served in our military throughout the country, but in particular in Alpine. Anyone here, veteran? Thank you very much for your service.
We do have quite a few in Alpine though. I love it. Like, I remember when my kids were in grade school, going to the programs and see how many, you know, veterans are there and then, you know, going to our programs.
And as I drove here on our, on my way to our meeting today, I saw Alpine Youth Council retrieving the flags that they put out, so I really appreciate them as well.
Jessica, do you have anything? Kelly, last meeting.
This is it, huh? It's been real. I get to go back to being a citizen and then I'll really be putting the screws to you guys.
Chrissy?
I have two things. One, I, um, we were one of the few, I guess, cities that allowed a public hearing last night, and this room was full of people. And it was.
Last night?
Last night.
It wasn't a state.
It was a state.
Sorry, yeah, I should have repealed Prop four if I caught the gist of it all. Anyway, so I just, and they, they wanted me to share with you their gratitude that we allowed them to come and some people, no one in Salt Lake had allowed them to come, and so people were driving from long distances to our location. So, I just wanted to share their appreciation. I'm not sure how the decision was made. We had a police officer here all night. He was doing a very good job watching to make sure no one was getting out of hand. And then Carolyn was here late into the night as well, so. Anyways, they expressed appreciation and passing that on. And that was the state chair of the Republican Party, Mr. Axon, who spoke, so, just so you know. And then I did wanna share an update on the Mount, the Mountainville traffic, Mountainville Academy Task Force, that's kind of a mouthful. We've been meeting regularly. Dan is here. He's representing the board for the Mountainville Academy. And he's been a great partner to work with. He's brainstormed many, many great ideas and is actively, you know, just thinking and doing, and so it's been a great thing. We have participants from the school, the police. I appreciate Charlie coming. He's been like a nice, stable. And with his not, like, freehand knowledge of what's legal and what's not legal and what we could enforce or not enforce, it's been very valuable to have him there. And then Jason, not Jason Thielen, Jason Judd from our city has also been helpful. So, we're to the point. We've explored many ideas, but we, a couple of things, and we do need your feedback. And so, I just wanted, I drew a map up here so that you could help understand where the traffic is needing to flow to. We, just as a baseline, getting to school isn't really a problem. It's not, I shouldn't say it's not really, it's not as big a problem as leaving the school in the end of the day because there's staggered drop off. And so, we really have focused on the afternoon traffic. And what was I gonna say about that? Anyways, that's where we're at. Okay, so here, I was just gonna draw, I already drew the map of the school.
And I'm gonna move away from the microphone, but if you look at where the students live, okay, I brought the wrong paper. Twenty-three percent are up here in the northwest quadrant. Ooh, this one doesn't work. So, twenty-three percent are up here, just based on where their homes are located. And then we do have sixteen percent just exclusively in Alpine, and this was some assumptions about where they live. Eighteen percent are headed like out of town this way, like over to Cedar Hills area. The biggest group we have is actually forty-five percent are trying to get to Lehigh, West Highland. So, there's Highland coming this way too. So, it's really like we've got to leave this quadrant and bring them all out this quadrant. So, we've looked at a variety of things and where we're settled on right now is that the crossing, the crosswalk right here, sorry, it's south of one hundred south, is stopping traffic, is encouraging people to queue up here on one hundred and twenty south. They also like, so up here, they also come over here to the park. So, it's bringing them all this way, which is the opposite way they need to go. They all need to come down to this quadrant to get out of our city. And so, we looked at some alternatives and one of them was to move the crosswalk actually south. So, there's an entrance and an exit into the parking lot of Mountainville, and so putting it smack in between. And that, Jason has taken the initiative to have that looked at by another traffic engineer or other traffic engineer. And they say there's actually a better location for that crosswalk for safety because it's away from these two, these two intersections of one hundred south and one hundred and twenty south. One hundred and twenty south is where the State Farm building is and one hundred south is, you guys know where that is. Any questions about what I've said so far and then we'll keep going? Okay, so if we brought the crosswalk south, that was a couple of other advantages, is it brings the students south. And so, probably a good exit for anyone who lives over here in this quadrant could be Red Pine. And then they could just hit Canyon Crest Road here where Ridge comes in and then head on down to Cedar Hills, like the Lone Peak area. Another way to bring them south is if they're headed out this way, they wouldn't stop traffic when they're trying to cross the road. And another thing, and Dan, what I'm forgetting, I'm gonna have you fill in all the gaps, right? So, then right here, if we can congregate like the students in one spot, we would have traffic stopped less frequently. Instead of stopping like even every minute, it could be delayed to every two minutes. At the current crossing, they're right by the bank exit and there's just no way you can put twenty clear shape.
Hey, Chrissy, is there any way we could put this on the agenda as a presentation? Because right now, it's hard for us to record it or do anything, and I think everybody wants the full details where everyone can kind of maybe look at some of the information before and be able to digest it better and.
My only, my only issue with that is because of the crosswalk, we have to get moving because of the weather changing. And so, they really want buy-in from the city council. So, with that coming, that, we just had our last meeting on Monday, yesterday. So, there wasn't really time to adjust the agenda and all of that, given our open meeting laws. So, if we just talk about moving the crosswalk, we can talk about everything else again.
Right, but I mean, is that something that, we can't even vote on that right now? This is just.
We don't need to vote.
Discussion.
We don't need to vote.
So, then why do we need to talk about it right now? I'm confused, I'm sorry.
So, I've told Chrissy, on a crosswalk or any change, like, like that's a major one, I like to have the city council buy in so that we don't do something and then come back and, well, how come you did it this way? Or why didn't you do it this way or whatever? The other thing with these, and Chrissy kind of mentioned it, to do a school crosswalk, you're required to do a warrant study. And so, that's, Jason's getting pricing from a couple of different firms to take care of that for us. For sure, at this high volume, both pedestrian and vehicles, we wanna make sure we dot all the i's and cross the t's on this. If, if there was ever an accident there, I guarantee you the first thing they'd go look for is if you followed the process to create this crosswalk, so. The other thing that would be required here, there's no ADA ramps, there's no lights. It's not something that would just happen in a month or something anyway. I'll bet just to order the lights, you're looking at probably six to eight weeks lead time to get those. You, you can have a school crosswalk without lights, but you, you can't have a reduced speed school zone like we have currently by the bank without lights.
Can we not move the existing lights?
Yeah. Yeah, we can. It's kind of like the Canyon Crest P High line. It'll take a little bit to move those. I'm trying to remember if the, those are solar or hardwired. I think they're solar, which would make it easier to move them than if they're hardwired. But there's just some steps that have to be taken to make this all work out.
And Jason's primary concern was not only there's this study and his rough estimate is five thousand, but to restripe and then do curbing gutter, just it's adding up. So, to move forward with those, I could come back to the microphone now.
To move forward with those expenses, to Shane's point, like, we don't want there to be an outcry from the council saying, why are you doing this? This isn't a good idea, but we've already spent the money to move all that, to do all, to do all that. And the other thing on timing is because we're not meeting at all until January, there was a plan to implement all of this prior, or to come back and have it a different way after the school break over Christmas. So, it's like new school year, new year, new ways. And that would give them time to communicate, because Dan is working on like guidelines to get people to and from. And so, with the weather changing, the money and Christmas break, we just feel like there wasn't time to wait to talk about this in January when we'd like to be moving forward then.
But for the cost alone, don't we need to have approval from council for the expenditure for that?
If it's over ten thousand.
So, what is the total cost then with the crosswalk, the study, everything? Is it less than, the ADA ramps and the lights, is that less than ten thousand?
It would, it would be over ten.
So, we can't do anything until we vote to spend the money on it?
I would totally agree though. I think that's a way better spot. I think the one that's out right now is very dangerous. Could I even find myself trying to speed out there to beat the traffic and all of a sudden there's a stop, someone stopping traffic? So, I think it does need to happen, but obviously.
There is something, we do have some money in the budget for a crosswalk improvement, it's like ten or fifteen thousand that was approved as part of the budgets, so there is some money there. It wasn't specifically earmarked for any location.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, where, if we're gonna spend money anywhere to see an improvement, I think this is where most of the residents would wanna see it than anywhere else in the city, for sure, but, um...
Jason also pointed out, and it's here in our projects, that we're currently on people in the city working on curb for ADA access. So before they leave, and then we have to get them to come back, they could deal with it now.
Yeah, how much longer is that?
They're, they're just about to start, so they have till the end of the year.
But again, waiting till January to talk about this puts all of this, like, we wouldn't even implement in the school year, which seems to not...
Well, and I think, like, my understanding was that this was top priority for council to come up with an immediate solution, maybe not the permanent forever solution, but to start working on solutions, so that the public can see that we're taking steps to mitigate this traffic instead of, you know, continuing to wait.
And Shane said we didn't need to, uh, uh, vote, but if we do, I'm happy to, you know, go through and have Dan, whoever you want, and Jason prepare all the information so that you, you feel like you understand what we're voting on, but a simple favorable, just like we did with the interlocal. We didn't vote on it last meeting, but we said, okay, we're, we're ready to move on that. Or we at least talked about it, so to know where everybody stood. That's, was the direction I was getting from staff, that it was important to talk about tonight. And we can definitely review it in another meeting.
And I didn't bring this up because I knew Jason and told me Chrissy was going to, but, um, this crosswalk topic. The one thing I wanna make sure the council understands is if we make changes, the changes are gonna have kind of a domino effect. If we're encouraging people to park and pick up on Red Pine Drive, it could transfer the problem from one area to, to another. If we require a right-out-only out of the Charter School parking lot, which I think you would need to do to have the crosswalk, 'cause it's, the crosswalk locations between the two driveways. So if we make that a right-out-only, that will also change traffic patterns. And that traffic will now go through a neighborhood that maybe thirty percent or whatever the number is, isn't currently going through. So there will be this ripple effect, and I just wanna make sure, that's why, on this one in particular, I wanna make sure the council is fully aware of what's going to happen and the potential ripple effect from it.
And I think it's good to talk about what are the reasons, and have you all informed, so that when there are traffic changes, that you're, you're not blindsided by those resident questions.
I'm, I think I'm okay with doing a s, this, the study that we have to do in order to move the crosswalk, but maybe, you know, they're gonna look at the optimal place to put it. I don't think this is gonna fix any of our problems at all. It'll create more, because now, instead of queuing up here on one twenty and up by Legacy Park, they're just gonna line up down Main Street and wait for their kids to cross the street and jump in the car and take off. And then same problem with the left-hand turn. I don't know, it, there's, there's no, until you address the actual, the actual problem, which is the queuing of the cars and the parents waiting all over the place, and kids going, running all over the place, and people in Alpine that don't stop at crosswalks, and we don't ticket them when they don't stop at crosswalks. Till you address all that stuff, you're not gonna solve any safety problem or any traffic problem. That's my opinion.
There is a multi-pronged approach, there is no doubt, but this is thing, something that seemed to be more time-sensitive. And, uh, all of, all of those issues that you talked about have been discussed, but we, we don't have the time or material to go into it at length. Um, but definitely, everything you said has definitely been part of the discussion, everything.
Anything else?
If Shane, if Shane, do you want more than what we've talked about, or? It's really Shane and Jason's request.
Let's do this. Jason?
Nothing from me.
Right, but do you wanna move forward with the crosswalk, or what do you...
I think that we probably should have it as an agenda item to talk through it, to Kelly's point. You know, there are some questions there that people might have, after they researched it a little bit before. Seeing it right here, it doesn't give you a lot of time to think through those questions.
That's true.
Brent?
I agree with what Jason said.
So wait, Jessica?
Can we have a meeting then before the end of the year, before school gets out, so that we're not, um, held up by weather?
Even if you do, it's still gonna be a while. I mean, it's, whether we have, you know, are you talking about December, or you guys could have the meeting in, um...
November eighteenth.
No, no, yeah, the eighteenth, there's a meeting that you guys are doing that, but I don't know if, there's not gonna be, the study's not gonna be done by then.
But yeah, we're not gonna, we can't move the crosswalk till we have the study done.
Well, of course not, but you'll have to authorize spending the money.
This is the first thing that I've, I've heard of it. I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, that's, that's what it sounded like.
This is all new, but, um, you guys could definitely add it as an agenda item. We just need two council members, but it looks like the majority, three, wanna wait, so...
So that's my question, can we have a meeting to discuss this in December then, early in December?
I think you should wait till you have two much more intelligent, brilliant people on the council.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're...
That can give much better input and, and...
So, I don't feel like...
Wait, so you're authorizing this study? You, you want this study prior to hitting the agenda? I'm a little confused.
No, 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 no. No. I was just trying to get a consensus for you, whether staff should move forward or not. It sounds like the majority is saying, no, let's not move forward with it, let's have an agenda item. As far as another meeting in December, I would rather not. Um, I feel like December is a crazy month. Most of us have travel, everything else booked out. Maybe you guys aren't as such, but I mean, you're, you know, it sounds like you're pretty busy, too.
This has been a top priority for residents for years.
Whether we have it in December or January, it's not gonna make a ton of difference. Because if you have the meeting in December, you can't have a new crosswalk by beginning of January.
You can, you move signs and you paint the street and you do the ADA. This isn't y- years and years and years of improvements. It literally can happen in seven days.
Except for the study can't.
Right, but, but the study's two weeks out. That's what Jason told us. The study's two weeks away, so if we're, we're serious about addressing Main Street issues, and we're serious about traffic, and the residents have asked us to do that, and we have the school that's aligned and saying, "We will disseminate this new setup, but what works best is if we can do that as a fresh start at the beginning of this, of January twenty twenty-six, then the timing is now, and it does make a difference."
That sounds good. Who's doing the study in two weeks, and who's paying for it?
We are. We're moving the sidewalk. That's our, that's a city responsibility.
She said there's a study happening in two weeks. What is that study?
No, Jason said it would take two weeks. He's reached out already to three engineering companies that he feels confident about that he can get that...
Jason Judd.
Yeah.
Has already reached out and looking for the warrant studies.
It would take two weeks to do, he didn't communicate this to me, so I apologize. It will take two weeks to complete, or they could begin in two weeks.
Two weeks to complete.
Yeah, he's already reached out to see who could, who, who could put it on their, you know, staffing or schedule.
We have a meeting next Wednesday, I think, with, with one of them. We were talking about other things, too, but they were one of the ones that we, that he reached out to as well.
They're moving forward, looking for one, but he, he did not wanna hire anyone without our support.
I get the urgency and the problem that the traffic is. What I don't like is, I feel like this is being done hastily, um, especially when it's gonna be, we don't know what the effects are. I understand what you're saying, and, um, in theory, it should be beautiful, but I just, I feel like we've made a lot of decisions in city council where there's unintended consequences for things. Um, where this is gonna affect such a big population. I don't know, I feel comfortable rushing into this. What if we have our meeting in January and we implement it like after a school holiday? I get that you wanna fresh start after, you know, Christmas break, but if there's another break like Martin Luther King Day or President's Holiday, where it's been a three-day break or whatnot, and be able to do it, and to me, it's...
This is, this is also from feedback from, um, Shane, saying that we won't be able to stripe. So if we delay, it's, we might as well wait till spring, because we don't have enough warm days to stripe, because it's a thermal process.
So the striping is related to, or the longitudinal, like, the lines that we paint? The, the crosswalk, we would burn heat tape on. That can be done.
Regardless of temperature?
The painting is something that...
Okay, I, I misunderstood you.
Involved restriping the road, as it sits right now in front of the Charter School.
Okay, but a crosswalk does not require temperature?
We've, I mean, it's better if it's warmer, but we've, we've had to put them on in cold weather.
Okay, I didn't, I misunderstood that then.
If you get ice and, you know what I mean, then you can't really do it with ice on the road.
Like, after a break, what would that look like implementing it for Mountainville?
Because again, I know, it, it seems hastily in this conversation, but I know the task force has spent hours.
I get it, I totally get it. But to decide something during council communications, it'd be one thing to get the consensus and move forward, but right now, we don't have a consensus. I get it. If you, you know, if you feel like that's necessary, what I'm hearing is that the striping with the heat, what we're seeing on the crosswalks itself, he's talking about painting lines on the road, correct?
Yeah.
So if you're just talking about a crosswalk, that can happen, as long as there's not ice and snow on the road. Are you hearing that, Chrissy, or no?
Oh yeah, no, I am.
And I'm definitely all for safety. I just wanna make sure I understand the pro, the whole, not even, it wasn't even on the agenda. That's a little troubling for me.
Well, we did have a council meeting that said, "Let's have a task force." We all agreed to the task force. We said, "We would like to have you all work on this and bring us back the idea." So we're following the council process, the council guidance.
It's not. The task force was just, uh, some, you know, I get it, but if you wanted like a city task force, that should have been more formalized. You guys voted not to formalize it, which is fine. I appreciate the time that Chrissy has put into it, and Dan. I attended the meeting, and I felt like I loved the energy and the synergy of everyone involved. But coming around and trying to push something forward that we are gonna have to spend money, it's gonna affect most of our residents during a staff report, to me, that's not a staff, that's not following our process. That's circumventing the process.
So do we, for all crosswalks, put that on an agenda and vote on it?
No, but something that major?
That's, that the residents have been asking us to solve for years, and we've said, "Let's start looking at it."
We have nothing that says it, it's gonna do that.
I think Chrissy mentioned, you know, this is gonna take a multi-pronged approach to solve the issues down there. I think we need to make sure that all those prongs line up, and that we don't create something that has an unintended consequence. And I think this crosswalk study will probably be a little more, uh, expanded than what a typical one is to look at some of those things, you know, the no-left turn is, was that discussed? I think it would have to be that way, otherwise you have the conflict right there, you know, on top of the new crosswalk.
I'm still unclear. We, you, we need council approval to have this study, or should we wait till this study to have it on the agenda? Because the agenda will have, I mean, the study will have facts and circumstances, or right now, we're just speculating.
So Chrissy...
So we're just trying to get a study authorized, is my understanding.
What I'm hearing from the council is that they wanna wait till January for the next meeting. From, that was from Kelly, Jason, and Brent, and have it go through the process, follow the council process. If I didn't hear correctly, please correct me, Brent, Jason, or Kelly?
Yeah, can you clarify, do you, would you like a study so that you understand the impact of it? Or do you need to talk about it before you authorize the study? That's my question.
I think like anything we do, this should be, should have been on the agenda. And I understand you're short on time, but with a, a presentation and understanding of all the parameters, and heck, Chrissy, we've spent like three hours before discussing the intensity of the illumination of a sign in front of an elementary school. So I think we could spend more than two minutes saying, "Let's stripe a crosswalk," like...
That's not my question. I, I don't know, can somebody ask it in a better way? I'm asking, do you want to get the facts and circumstances before we talk about it as a council? The facts and circumstances would be from a traffic, uh, I mean, a, a warrant study. I feel like it's hard to talk about based on speculation, but a warrant study would answer so many questions that we would all have.
I'm not gonna be here, but I would love, ideally tonight, like, you and Dan would have come in and presented to us like the overall plan and what, what you guys were thinking, and how the crosswalk fit into that plan, and who, who is gonna proceed to do what studies and look at what, and potentially do some A B testing. For me personally, if I was doing this, I'd talk to Shane and figure out, okay, let's do the study, but how do we set up a temporary sidewalk? Because even after we do a study and they say, "Yeah, let's put a sidewalk there," or a crosswalk there, who knows what's gonna happen? So when I put the crosswalk there, I might do it for a week and just see what happens. You know what I mean? And not make a permanent crosswalk or permanent change like that. So there's a lot of stuff that goes into, what, you're talking about crossing Main Street. You know, you're not talking about crossing some random road in Alpine, so I just, I would...
I don't think that anyone sitting at this table can predict what's, what happened, and therefore I feel like we need the study done. That's all I'm trying to say. Because we can't sit, we've tried, we, laypeople have sat and tried to figure this out. I feel like we need the study, and that's what I'm asking for.
Is this crosswalk warrant study, is it encompassing the whole problem as well? Is it looking at, it is?
No, I agree with, I agree with what you're saying, though.
Is it, is it, is it saying left turns and the current flow of all the traffic and...
How that affects the other neighborhoods?
How it affects the other neighborhoods, that's what I wanna know, is before I, is this just specifically for moving one crosswalk? Then I don't think that really accomplishes what we need to look at.
That's where I say, I think this particular crosswalk study would involve a little more than we typically do, like, we did one out on Westfield Road and Sycamore. Um, this one is more in the heat of the battle, and I think it's gonna be different. Um, something else to consider, you know, we've talked about the, the demonstration grant that we received for bike lanes. Um, if we do that, that's also gonna move issues into other areas. And so I think all of those things probably should be looked at at the same time.
Are they not part of the study that the school just did, and then we had the review? Couldn't we just do an amended study like we did with the P I? So we already have a really, I think, detailed scope and study of Main Street traffic involving school and all of those things. How has that already not been looked at in some form?
Well, we, we're hearing that the school's plan might change, so that might change how everything operates within their property. So we, we don't know that right now.
Also, their traffic study did not go beyond just their borders and how the traffic is affected beyond that. And so it did not take into consideration the active transportation plan. It did not take into consideration how the traffic flow would affect the other neighborhoods. Their scope is much more narrow.
Maybe, eh, to help understand, maybe the urgency isn't there, okay? I, we'll give, we'll just take that out of, off the table. But, um, and Jason has been the representative of the staff on our task force, and he was given the responsibility to get back to us on this, which he got back to us yesterday. So I'm sorry that you didn't get more information, but that's as soon as I had the information. So please don't, like, that, that's the first, I heard the information was yesterday, because he wanted to take it to a traffic engineers and run it by them, not to get an official report, but just get their feel, and that, eh, more than one traffic engineer, from what he said, is looking at this favorably. So it wa, it was like, we didn't wanna bring this up if the traffic engineers were gonna say, "Yeah, bad idea," right? Go back to the drawing board. So we, we were trying as hard, best we can to get way in without taking the necessary step of getting an official warrant study that would cost us money. So we have tried really hard to do as much homework as we can before we brought it to this point. And if we need more time to get everybody comfortable with all the work that's gone ahead of time, that's fine, and we don't have to rush it. I understand, like, this is a huge issue for our city, um, and so bringing everybody up to speed is warranted. And I was just trying to say, all the questions we have as a task force, we can't even answer because we're just laypeople. We, we really need someone to weigh in on this, should we move the, should we even move it? Is it, other than an unofficial view from the traffic people, engineers?
Again, the recommendation from the professional was... Again, the recommendation from the professional was, this is actually a better location than the current unsafe location that sits at multiple corners. So let's just get it validated by a study.
By a warrant study.
So had he said, actually, at first look, this is a worse option, it would have completely...
We would have never had this conversation today, we would have moved on. And, and, but with sort of a little bit of green lighting from some professionals, we felt like, and Jason said, I, I need, and Shane have both asked, we need council to even get the study. I, I personally would prefer we talk about it as a council with a study so that we're not speculating on the impact. That's my preference. Whether or not we do it in January or March, or, you know, in fall, in the fall, I guess is a mute point, we've lived with it for twenty years.
And I think we're, yeah, I think we're all in favor of improving that safety of that crosswalk. But it sounds like the engineer was looking at the current situation. Yeah, the crosswalk would, would be safer a little bit to the south by the school based on the current situation without looking at all these other factors that we have to consider. So I just want it, I just would like to have a more, more time and have a more comprehensive look.
But it's a little bit of a catch-22 because the guidance given has been, we won't look at anything that's changing until this is addressed and, and some solutions are presented. So to say that the other factors weren't taken in, that the guidance was actually... Given to not consider any changes on the campus that actually we need to look at and solve for current problems.
Mayor? I, I just need to express my discomfort with not having any of this noticed on the agenda. This is the public's business, and the Open and Public Meetings Act requires that we do the public's business in public, properly noticed. What the task force has talked about with professionals or otherwise is not on the agenda, and it's not part of the public discussion. So I'm just, I would prefer that we don't take any action on this and even, we defer discussion. It's, it's okay to discuss, but that's as far as I would take it.
So noted.
I think it would be a great work session to really schedule some time and dig into it and, you know, have that discussion amongst council.
A work session versus on, on an agenda, a formal agenda?
Well, it could be on, it could be a poll.
Both, I think a work session to really delve into it and understand, take the time, really hash it out, and then you can have it later on in that day. If we do it, usually in the past when we've done a work session, we've done it in the first hour, and then it can come back as an agenda item that very same day.
Yeah, the work session would be properly noticed, that's my concern. We're in council communication and we don't have it properly noticed.
That was my thing, like, it's council communications. Let's move on. I want, nothing for Jason. Wanted to thank Ja, Jason and Kelly for serving on city council. This will be my last meeting with you guys. I've appreciated serving with you guys, appreciate your service. Wanted to reiterate what Brent was saying about our veterans. I did have one last thing for you guys to think about if, and we will bring it back as probably a presentation if you guys are amenable to it. But to talk about maybe working with an entity to help, to help fundraise for our firehouse expansion and our community center. That's it, if you have any questions, talk to me about it. But if, if you guys are interested, we can bring it back for a presentation and then eventually an action item. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Your last meeting. I'll send it. All right, no, Jason, Jason.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.